Yeah, if you want to speak, fill out this form right here.
Exhausting.
Yeah, it's true.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Even though it was put out there around time too. I apologize, everybody, about the time.
Okay, being six fifteen, I will open this public hearing. Uh, this is on the law number two to act out of the marijuana retail dispensaries and public consumption areas. Um, I will tell you a few things and then everybody gets to do their thing, okay? Here's our thought, one of the things that we're, several things. We're talking about going forward and why we're entertaining this law at this time. The way the New York state law is written, towns must act out if they're going to act out by December thirty first of this year. If you don't act out by December thirty first of this year, you can never opt out. So you're automatically in and you don't get to change your mind and say, wait, this isn't working and do it all over again. So you have a one-time, one-time good deal window, this is it. The converse of that is that you can always opt back in at any time. They will, they allow that. So that's the first thing. Second thing, the people that are in charge of writing the regulations, Marijuana Control Board, which is dictated by the state law, as of two weeks ago, had exactly one meeting. They have not written any regulations as of yet. At least nothing that we have. Uh, nothing has been passed through any of the houses on the Hill. So that's another consideration for us is we would be saying, okay, if we allow this to just go forward and do whatever. We're saying yes to what we don't know. We have no idea what those regulations are going to say, what they're going to encompass at all. So again, it's one of those, you're saying yes to something that you have no control over. And once the window is closed at the end of the year, if you don't like it, eh, you're kind of stuck, you can't, you can't get out. The towns that are not opting out, and we've had this discussion at many of our supervisors' meetings, uh, and there's, there's quite a few of them. Are, I won't say virtually all of them, but most of them are going to be treating these businesses as adult entertainment. Uh, one of the things that the law allows is if you do allow for retail dispensaries, the towns can control where they go by location, by zoning. So most of the towns that are not going to opt out are going to control where these things are, the numbers of them, et cetera, by, by zoning and treat them as adult entertainment. I'm not going to speculate what we would do here, but that's what they're doing in most of those towns is, once you say adult entertainment, is on the same level as strip clubs, basically. Adult bookstores and so forth. So that, that's the basic idea behind why we want to say, at this point, say no. Now, there's been a lot of squawk on the internet about taxes. But let's, let's put that to rest right now. There's a four percent tax on the sale of whatever is done within your town. It's not a countywide sharing thing for the town. The county gets twenty-five percent of that four percent. In other words, we only get seventy-five percent of that. So it's only what's here sold, and we only get seventy-five percent of that four percent. So basically, I don't know, three percent, I don't know if that's actually how it works out number wise, but and twenty-five percent of that money goes to the county. That's how the county gets their money out of the deal from all the towns. So unless, it's not, it's not a sharing thing like the normal sales tax. And this tax is collected by the county, but it's kept completely separate from our normal sales tax receipts. So it's not, it's not a shared income with all the towns. So if you, example, if Sweden or Karma has great big huge sales, good for them, we don't, we don't see any of that. We wouldn't see a dime of it. We only get what was generated here within the town of Hamlin. Everybody will get three minutes. Here's what we're going to do. You can get up, state your name, I've got a list. Um, we're, we're not here to discuss the efficacy, effectiveness, the morality, any of that stuff of the law, because the main law is already passed. And there are, I don't know, eight or nine different licenses and so forth that we have no control over. This is the only thing we have control over is the retail dispensaries and the onsite consumption sites. So that, that's what we're here to talk about. If everybody, if somebody starts to get off in the weeds here, I'm going to just say, hey, appreciate your opinion, but, because that's, the law is already signed. We, we don't have any control over that. So sitting here debating it isn't going to do anybody any good. We're just talking about whether to opt in or out of this law. Generally, not a discussion period. You get up, you tell us what you would like us to hear and what your opinion is. Tell us your name, address, so forth, and there's a code of conduct over there. If everybody, if somebody starts to get out of whack, we'll say, read the words over there. Let's, everybody be decent, have civil discourse, because that's all we're here to do is listen and take in your opinions. So with that, we have some people that have signed up to speak in no particular order. I've got several of them. Everybody gets three minutes to try to keep it on point. Edward Embry?
Yeah.
That's you, okay?
Beautiful, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, first of all, you just said more than three minutes than we did, so.
That is my meeting, though.
No, I know, it's your meeting, alright. I was coming in here to let you guys know about the legalization of marijuana. Since it's been legal, I have been using it two to three times a day, two hits at a time. Um, I was doing the CBD and it was just minorly affecting it, but since I started using the marijuana, I'm taking ten less anti-inflammatories a day when I run into friends with Percocet or Vicodin that they want to sell me for ten bucks apiece. Every once in a while, I have some in my pocket in case I wake up with my backache after I've taken all my anti-inflammatory. It's really helped me. I'm not sitting around getting buzzed all the time. I appreciate this dispensary being right here in town, being on disability. I'm on a limited, very limited income. I can, I rarely afford it, but when I do, it helps me way too much. But in three months, I've taken ten less pills a day because of the marijuana. Now, I know you're, you're talking about that, you know, you're asking about the rules haven't been made. Well, they have been made through legislature before they passed the law. They did have a setup, they did have governing rules, and they do have a basis that they do go by. So, um, and the other thing I find, I find it hard to categorize this in the same category as adult, uh, strip clubs, as you said. Um, not going against you, I'm just saying that this stuff isn't all bad. We're not going to see drug deals at Crosby's, we're not going to see drug deals in this parking lot and other parking lots. We also have other ways to get screwed up in this town if we want to. You can go, go to the bars, go out to the bars. Seven out of town of them at six o'clock at night will have somebody drunk at the corner of the bar who's still getting served, okay? They'll make it home, alright, and everything, but there's, this stuff isn't going to bring the bad people to your, to your neighborhood, it's going to bring the good people to your neighborhood. I've been in his establishment. I've seen online how people have said that the outside, it looks like hell, it looks like a dump. Well, it looks a hell of a lot better, Nick, since you've been there. And I've been in that store, and every time I go in there, there's a new door, there's new floor tiles, there's new stuff on the wall, there's new lighting. The kid's working his ass off to get, excuse my language, kid's working his butt off to get the place presentable while he raises his kids and also works on the vehicles. He's renting that building, correct? Yeah, he's a tenant, and he's putting this, he's shelling this money in there. He's, he believes in his business, and I believe in the business too. I've had no problems going there. Um, people go in there, pick up what they want to consume. They take it home or they take it somewhere else. Nobody's consuming there like we, you know, at other establishments. I'm not against alcohol. As we know, I, I will go out and have a couple beers every once in a while. I do enjoy recreational marijuana.
We're not here to discuss a specific location or any other.
No, I'm not, yeah, alright, I'm sorry about that, but for you guys to opt out of it, people like us, it's hard for us to sit here and protest and get the signatures and say, hey, let's address this again. It's already been addressed. Um, it's been addressed in the other states. It's the rules that they're going to come up with, you know, they're going to come up with the same rules, they're not going to let us do anything wrong. They're going to come up probably with the same rules that they have in all the other states, it's working for the other states. Um, the tax money saying you're only getting twenty-five percent of it is better than nothing, um, which was on that corner for years. Um, the condition of that corner has gotten much better since Nick's been there. I can go to Stanley Dollar and see, I can, there's other properties who have worse conditions around here who aren't doing anything about it. Nick is doing something about it. But I do want, if, if it's not legal here, I'm going to go somewhere else and get it. And the most important, most important thing about this is what they're doing downtown now, and they've been doing it for years, is they take crystal meth, they'll take heroin, they'll take fentanyl, they'll put it in a water bottle, and they spray the weed with it. Now you're addicted to weed, okay? And that's what they're doing to people, and they're doing it all the time, all through the city. I would rather go to his place where I can read the menu and say, this is this type of weed, this is good for arthritis. This is good for, um, sleeplessness, insomnia. This one will keep you awake, it's called indica sativa and hybrids. I've owned a lot, and I started smoking dope in nineteen seventy-four, okay? That's when I first did it, I quit for thirty years. But that's the most important thing, when I get a quality product from him, there's nothing in it. I can smoke it safe, and I know what it's going to do to me. And I, I just want to, I'm fifty-eight years old, I have three children, and it's real easy for me to come up here and say that I smoked pot and I think it should, I think you guys should let him stay in business and not opt out. I think it'd be a big mistake because you'll never opt back in. I don't see it happening again. This town isn't a big moving town with millions of people who are going to sway a vote, okay? And I don't see anybody getting hurt by this business at all. Thank you very much.
Damien Hammond. Okay, so, um, I guess, uh, I know that the tax thing was kind of something we wanted to just gloss over, but, when you mentioned the, uh, four percent being cut down by twenty, by twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent of that was three, three percent, um, that's still hundreds of thousands of dollars that I don't understand why we feel like Hamlin has the room to pass on. We're not, you know, we don't have a lot going for us in Hamlin, and I feel like we could use any excuse for a return on investment. And, uh, as we've seen by other states, like you mentioned, there is a return on investment, there is a big incentive, and we're a farming community, so beyond just marijuana, there's hemp too. Marijuana has a tax return, I think it's three, three cents for every edible, a fifth, or wait, an eighth of a cent for every concentrate, uh, gram, gram, and a fifth of a cent for all flower grams. And, uh, I mean, I've also gone to this shop, and, uh, there's a lot of business there. I kind of get the sense that it's, it's a hub for a lot of people in Hamlin. And I also don't get the sense that there's a lot of people, a lot of reason for people to get together in Hamlin at all right now. So I, I don't understand why we're considering taking this off the table. I've talked about this with a lot of groups in Hamlin, like people that live here. I don't talk to a lot of people here regularly, but I've asked them frankly, what they think about these sort of things, and they think it's a great idea to get involved with this. I brought this up months ago before we even heard about like, you know, taking it off the table or whatever. Uh, I heard about farming unions around New York State trying to get involved with this. And, uh, you know, make sure that, uh, I can't remember which committee you were referencing, but you said they weren't, they hadn't made a solid decision yet. I'm assuming they're going to go with the, what they have, the tax breakdown that I mentioned, the fifth of a cent, eighth cent, three cents. I mean, that's what they have already, so I assume we're go with that, it works. Other sort of, like hemp, that's not really in the conversation yet, but other states have already figured that out, so we'll probably use a model that works, like you said. It keeps it safer, keeps it regulated. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-one and up can purchase. I don't understand, like, this is a no-brainer. On all fronts, it makes the situation better. Safer, uh, we know where they're getting it, we're getting a return on investment. And like, wouldn't you rather them do it here than somewhere where we can't make sure that they're safe? So I guess I, I yield the rest of my time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Dumas?
Hi, thank you. So, um, I won't take up too much time and I'll, I'm going to piggyback off of this gentleman's, what he said. I'm a professor, um, here locally. Uh, father, a single father of two. Um, I go into Nick's shop regularly. Um, and I'm grateful for it. This isn't, I'm going there to get blitzed, I go in there, I microdose like you. You know, throughout the day, I use sativa during the day. I have, it, it's effective and it works, it keeps me going. I've had, it has replaced, um, all other medication for anxiety and such. My brother, who has suffered from seizures his entire life since he was five years old, kindergarten, he's just turned thirty-something, I have no idea. And he, um, is in a state with, uh, he's in Arizona and has been for the past six or seven years, and he has, he's down to one or two meds for other things. His anti-seizure meds he no longer has to take, and that's because he has a regular dose, medicinal dose of medical marijuana. This, the fact that this is being considered on the same level as adult entertainment makes no sense to me whatsoever. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there if it was that kind of establishment. Um, I don't go there for that, and nor do I go there to, um, sit around and drink or, you know, or, you know, the equivalent of drinking, right, you know? In terms of alcohol consumption, it has decreased alcohol consumption in my experience. Uh, like you, I hadn't touched it in thirty-some years, but divorce, uh, causes lots of stress, and therefore, uh, I'm grateful for a friend who reintroduced it to me, um, after so many years. And it certainly isn't the experience I had when, you know, as a child. And every time I go into Nick's establishment, it's, it's welcoming, very welcoming. It's constantly evolving and changing and looking better and always a surprise in a good way. That's it. I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding still, and it's of nobody's fault. Um, your decades of, of propaganda and misinformation will do that. And that's unfortunate, because this is not the demon, this is not the roof of madness BS that we were made to believe when we were young. So, um, I really hope that we consider keeping this, because it is just a positive. Where else are we going to go? There's a, I just saw Elmira or something on my, I have no idea, two and a half hours away. I'm not driving two and a half hours away, right? So we're stuck, we're stuck going downtown. I do not want to go downtown, okay? That's not why I do this. And this would be a hardship, I think, for many who have, um, become, uh, who are grateful to have this available locally. And a tax revenue, do we really want to turn that away? So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Nick, you're up, next.
So I just want to clarify too, one thing is that there's not retail sales at our store, we operate out of donation, um, type of, uh, method. So if you want free, we can come on by, but, um, let me start, let me give my notes here. So cannabis is a plant. It's also a mental, emotional, physical pain relief. Um, it's a textile, a medicine, um, and a textile too, by the way, that can still be grown in every field in this town, whether you guys pass what you want or not, so it's still going to be around. A socializing tool, it's a farm product that was even grown by Thomas Jefferson and George Washington. Uh, it was named a class A hallucinogen by federal government about sixty years ago, which as we all know is not a hallucinogen. Our perception, um, meaning the people in this room today, we've all been taught so strongly that marijuana was an illegal drug that's made to hurt us. It could put us in jail, or it can make us even unsuccessful people if we have it in our bodies. Um, today's new perception and perceptual reality with the beauties of experience and of science, we know our, uh, learning true value of marijuana in daily life today in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, much like when we ended slavery or racism, something that we have to take that was beat into us and turn it around, and, something that could forever cost a man, you know, a life in prison for having a hundred pounds or more, and was part of a dare program for kids in school, is now okay to use anywhere that smoking a cigarette is allowed. This is an adjustment period, but for those that still won't break from their old ways and be more open-minded to a new future, need to realize it can't be stopped. Even though, even if this board today denies American right of business and following the American dream, everyone needs to realize that the avenues such as signed petitions and more will make it possible to still have marijuana, marijuana distributed locally here in Hamlin. The people of Hamlin want this here, I can assure you, as a local proprietor in this board's jurisdiction, that my customers locally have signed over sixty names. I have over sixty names between this piece of paper and an online petition that's still growing every day. It's in favor of retail sales of marijuana in our town. We want to know that pot we buy is healthy. We want to know that it's legitimate product. We want to have an education on the types of strains we are buying and how they're going to benefit us as a result. We don't want fentanyl killer weed that kills us when we smoke it. We don't want to have to deal with street dealers or shady situations. We want to keep our money invested into our towns and local businesses. I would hope that the town board would prove its loyalty to our health, safety, happiness, and local businesses, that its decision today will allow us to have retail marijuana in town. I have been offering marijuana as a donated item in my store for over three months. We do not retail it. We don't have a huge selection due to the state laws, and we're also only in at this right now to offer a taste of the benefit of marijuana, what it could do if we were allotted a retail license. Um, clientele is vastly populating. My projected numbers are closewards upwards of four percent of those numbers would be about two hundred thousand dollars a year. So even if you're getting, you know, a few percents of that, I think that's pretty, pretty darn good. Like you said, better than nothing. Which tells me the business would boom, which would bring a few jobs to the area even, improve my property and others in the future, and also bring hundreds of thousands of tax dollars to this town every single year, which as we know, we could use. We bring education to the customers, teach them about our strains, what they are known to benefit, and putting proper THC product in a person's hands that they can personally benefit from. We bring a health product. We, we wear proper safety gear in order to package and retail these products. We personally receive it from our local farmer, which know, we, which, like I said before, the town must understand that this is something they wouldn't be able to stop being grown. In fact, Joey across the parking lot from here, when we walk out, could grow six plants in his front yard if he wanted. But at least we know we're buying a product that's liable, from a liable, uh, retail store that's insured, that we are getting something that causes, uh, that doesn't cause overdose and causes to die. Because if the town wants to make it this hard, people will continue to bring our tax dollars to other towns, but also they will buy product on the streets that's very unsafe and possibly deadly. I've heard rumor that this board had a concern, uh, maybe about THC edible products on the market and packaging related to children. Uh, well, as we know, New York State has always been a strong advocate to beat up marketing and packaging for products that children shouldn't have, and I can assure you that from the industry I've already been in. I don't see it as being attractive to children, but regardless of the fact, this board allows a liquor store down the street to sell birthday cake vodka, and people of this town to have in their homes with their children should be enough to overcome the particular concern. Also, you allow street products to be sold rather than sourced than in stores. You're going to obviously see non-conforming packaging that will confuse a child and risk his or her safety. It really is just like anything else. We teach them not to use this or eat that or smoke this, just like we do with alcoholic beverages in our home. My children personally are around marijuana products and have been there for their entire lives. But I have never had a question of curiosity or worry that my child wanted to have these things. In fact, on the way before we came here, my son said, you want to bring a chocolate bar and show them? I said, no. And he said, I said, go put that back in. She, my daughter said, why do you got that? You didn't need that, Gabriel. And he said, no, I'm not allowed to have that. He knows. Keep our money local, keep our people local, keep our weed local, keep our town happy. Make the right decision today, or you can rest assured that we, the people, will make sure that the right decision is made in the future. Thank you.
Nick, do you want to say anything? Yeah, I can work mine too.
Yeah.
Just broken.
My name's Nick Russo, I live on County Line in Hamlin. Local pastor of a church in Walker Baptist Church. I've heard a lot of the, um, benefits of marijuana tonight. I don't know much about, uh, all of this, so I do what most of you would do. I went, um, to professionals, I went to the National Inter date, National Institute of Drug Abuse, it's a online, uh, help. And I looked at some of the benefits and also some of the downsides of marijuana. I would like to, as we heard the benefits, I also want to balance if we're going to talk about, I didn't think we were going to talk about the medical things of that, but that's where it seemed like a lot of the conversation went. So I'll just give the other side real quick. And, uh, it does alter the senses, it also, this is again, according to the institute, altered sense of time, changes of mood, impaired body movement, difficulty with thinking and problem solving, impaired memory, hallucinations, delusions, and, um, some other long-term, potential long-term side effects. I read that and that makes me nervous. It makes me nervous, yes, of, um, I understand that the, uh, age group of, uh, what this is appealing to is an adult age. But we also know that, um, the, um, lowering of a, um, intolerance towards something also becomes more beneficial, and I'm reading reports here of percentage numbers that these numbers are going up higher and higher amongst middle school and younger people because it is more available. That, it just makes, so I, my whole purpose in coming here was not to meet somebody up or anything like that. I wasn't even going to say this stuff, I, I printed just to learn more for myself, just so I knew what I was talking about here. But I didn't hear the other side. I only heard one side of it. And I wanted to present possibly, possibly the other side. I think it's wise to, as the board says, hey, let's get some more information on I think it's wise to, as the board says, hey, let's get some more information on this before we go forward with it. What are the regulations? What are the things that are being set forth? And I support the board in opting out at this time. So, I just wanted to let you know there's a large contingency of people that also, although maybe they're not here tonight, do believe in opting out of this program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Newman.
Newman.
How you doing, everybody?
I'm Roger.
I'm Bill Newman. I'm fifty-eight years old. I've lived in this town my whole life. I don't have a phone here to talk up, so I'm just gonna wing it here. Okay? I grew up over in Walker from 1963 to 1986. Did a little bit of apartment hopping at the Bradford there, and for the last twenty-six years, I've lived down on North Hamlin Road. I've been married twenty-five years, got a twenty-four-year-old daughter. I work in a machine shop over in Hilton. I've been there thirty-six and a half years. So, Stupery is my middle name. You know, to what the gentleman said over there about the different effects of marijuana, I mean this with no disrespect, sir, but I can tell you never tried it. No, no, you, the guy behind you.
Oh, oh, oh.
Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes. I do believe the purpose of this is to discuss with the board.
Okay. Well, I apologize then for that, but the point is being to speak really effectively on a subject you might want, and you know, have more than just that. Okay, well, so we're gonna go.
We're not here to attack anybody else.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay. I wasn't attacking. Hey, I wasn't attacking.
It kinda was going that direction.
All right, okay. Well, we're gonna let that lie, because we're gonna go back to the subject of what you gentlemen are addressing, and that is to opt in or opt out. I'm gonna stay away. I support what all these other people said who smoked it. I've smoked it for a long time, and as you can see, it didn't destroy my life. I've got a pretty good one. So, but whether to opt in or opt out, wow, New York State, one gem. They legalize something and then make no availability to it. They tell you you have one opportunity to opt out, rather than saying you have an opportunity to opt in and then opt out at any time. Since when did they lead the town of Hamlin around by their nose? You know, one word comes to my mind, and man, that's freedom. And you know, you make a very logical argument that while we'll opt out now and we can opt back in anytime, geez, that sounds pretty, pretty good, but man, with the state of New York and the crap they're pulling and what these people here have said, I can't help but thinking, just to stick it to them, I'd say, "No, we're gonna opt in." And since when can they regulate things that go on in the town? If you got a bad situation wrong in this town, sure the heck seems like you ought to be able to say, "We got a bad situation. We're gonna address it. We're gonna pass a law and change something," and Albany be damned. Now, with that said, I will simply say, I understand your position. Okay? It's not, it's not an easy one. You know, you're personally, you'd love to opt out of this thing, and then let's wait till you hear what the laws are two years down the road. What's with that? And then we'll maybe opt back in. Well, people gotta make plans. Gentleman like Nick here who has a shop CBD and those type of products, he's looking forward to down the road, down the road. So, he's making plans, he's doing improvements on the property. Kinda hard to say, "Well, we're gonna opt out now and then." Well, once they pass the laws and everything, maybe, well, we'll see how it goes. So, I have gotta say, well, I don't have a real personal stake in it. Don't forget, this is Hamlin, you, it's a farming community, you grow your own. But with that said, I would support not opting out, only because, as I say, if for no other reason than for someone who's gotta try to plan for the future and, you know, for whatever reason, I think what the state did was absolutely terrible. You know, other states, they would have a referendum, it would be on the ballot in November, they would pass it, and the next morning, the shops would be open and things would be happening. New York State, that was political crap. Let's throw it out there and hope we get a few votes, because we've legalized marijuana. Trouble is, they didn't do their homework, they didn't have a process in place to actually move forward. So, as the one gentleman was saying here, you have the opportunity to possibly get something that's tainted. Now, it kills me to think somebody has sprayed something on some good weed, because that just don't make sense, but I guess there's people out there who would do it. He brought up a good point, that if you were to put opioids on it, it could potentially addict you physically to the product, so that now you would not be able to stop. That's terrible. Man, I don't know, I don't know, but don't wanna take up a bunch of time, and I do wanna apologize to you again. I did not mean in any way to attack you. I simply meant, you know, to understand something, it's not a bad idea to understand it. It would be, you know, like me saying, geez, I would never do that, or that stuff's really horrible and bad. You know, my wife works in mental health. I know a lot of people take, you know, you know, stuff for that, and.
If you wanna, if you would like to continue the conversation.
No, okay. All right. I will yield.
Mr. Russo outside apologizing to him out there, that's fine, but that's not, that's not what we're here for.
All right, okay. Well, with that said, that's what I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the sign-in sheets that I have. Is, does anyone else wish to address the board? Take name and address. Well, they're on the sheets here, so.
I'm Marcia Berg, and I live on Newco Drive in Hamlin. I've been back in the area for the last six years. I just wanna say I'm in, I don't use marijuana, and I never have. I did try it once when I was in Colorado, maybe four, five years ago, and it didn't do anything for me, but I am in full support of allowing the residents of Hamlin to have legal access to a, what is going to be a legal drug, if you will, if it's being used medically, and similar to alcohol, if it's being used recreationally. I would much rather see people be able to get it legally than to have only the option of getting it illegally if they want to get it in Hamlin. And I feel like it's a civil right to have access to things that are legal, and it is taking away people's rights not to have access to things that are legal. My son is a medical marijuana grower. He works for Columbia Care, their first employee in New York State. He's been there four years, and he feels marijuana is very safe. He's a plant scientist, a graduate of Rutgers University, and I have known many people who've used marijuana. I have never heard of one of them having a hallucination as a result of smoking marijuana. It just doesn't happen. So, some of the information that is being used to try to prevent the passing of legalization of selling marijuana in Hamlin is just wrong, and I think, you know, the board needs to investigate the facts and make a decision based on the facts. It's a fact that that is wrong. I have a friend who has Alzheimer's disease. He's seventy years old, and for the last three years, he's been using legal medical marijuana. Huge improvement in his memory, in his social skills, in his ability to carry on. So medically, it's, that's the only person I know who's taking it medically, but I know that there are many people who are benefiting from pain relief and relief of nausea from cancer medicines. There are lots of good things about different types of marijuana. So that's really all I needed to say. Thank you.
Can I just readdress something today?
Sure.
One thing I'd wanna readdress is that, again, like, New York State has obviously been very, very against marketing of, you know, cigarette products, bait products. You can't go to magazines, you can't Facebook market advertise like drug market. I mean, there's so many things that New York's always been strict about. I couldn't see them coming out with regulations that were just bonkers, nonchalant, just go ahead, you know? I believe that New York is gonna probably rip us apart, just like they have everything else, and make it so it's plain Jane marketing, it's not gonna be able to have probably even the names of the flavors on the packaging. They might even take away the flavor of it, you never know, but I don't think it's gonna be anything that's determined to what this town can offer.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, I wanna say something.
Yes.
My name's Tim McCardle. I've lived here twenty-seven, I think, twenty-seven years. It's a quiet town. I like it that way. Why did you pick this area? I don't know. I mean, I would pick a busier area to sell marijuana, and then a small little town of Hamlin, right? I don't really like driving by on the corner and seeing that there every day. I mean, I'm not against smoking marijuana. I mean, you can get it.
Do you like a Vanna Gaffey?
I'm talking, right? I'm talking. I'm talking.
Right here talking about my business.
Let's not interrupt.
Let's stop being in my business.
Well, let's not be.
He's on shit on the wall. You can't let him do that.
If he would allow me to, or I'll shut it down now.
No.
He's expressing his opinion. Yes, there are, there's an awful lot of people, and you must.
You stopped him from talking about my business.
I am stopping. I'm asking.
I didn't say your business name.
I've been asking you, all of you, to just calm it down. We're winding up the hearing, we're just trying to get people's opinions, okay? Tim, we're not talking about a business, because that's not what we're here for.
I support opting out, because we don't know enough about what we're gonna do yet. We have to have answers first. I'm not against marijuana. You can get it, prescription from any doctor. My father, before he died, got it. It helped him, but I don't see why we need to have this in our town, and I, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I don't want it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tim. Yes.
I have some concerns about marijuana. My name is Kimberly Ford. I do know that people think that it'll be good for taxes and things of that nature, but my concern is how far one dispensary is from another. These are backcountry roads. It's not like they're going into a storm buying alcohol, driving to a neighbor's house, some of the children, and they will be young adults and children that will smoke in their cars, and unfortunately, there's stop signs, the roads are dark. That's one concern. A rise in crime is gonna be another, and I know if you look at different stats, you'll see some are lowered, some are higher. We already have a heroin problem, and it's everywhere. I know a lot of people believe that marijuana will be the cure for heroin. I'm a parent of an addict. That is not the case for all. We stood and we fought a war on drugs to keep our kids safe. I don't wanna see little kids walking from the library or wherever while their parents are saying, "Don't do drugs," but we have marijuana dispensaries. I'm not for businesses not succeeding, because we do need businesses. I agree that we should opt out, at least for a time being, until everybody understands it, or put it in a commercial location, not where children are gonna pass through. You can't tell them not to smoke marijuana, but yet, or you can smoke marijuana or eat edibles, but we don't want you doing heroin. It seems to me insane. The biggest concern with that as well, I noticed on the news, they are making edibles look like gummies, smiley faces, and Skittles. We don't have candy cigarettes for sale anymore, because it leads children to addiction of smoking cigarettes. I'm not understanding why they would market to children. If they get their hands on, a lot of people say marijuana's safe, children eat enough gummies, pets, it's a concern. So, I just think people should opt out until you have more information or in a safer area, and give the kids a fighting chance to succeed in life.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you, back my time.
Well, you quite frankly, you used a lot of your time, so, very briefly, please.
Okay, I just wanted to stress again that having it here in Hamlin isn't any safer than, you know, it isn't any less safe than having it anywhere else. It's actually, it's the other way around. If we don't have it here, we don't have the means to regulate it, it will still be passed around. New York has a very robust, like, black market, underground market sale of weed. It's actually of a lot of discussion right now, so that's why we're actually hung up on this, is because New York has a very robust underground sale. So, if anybody has the right to be concerned about, you know, this, this business of how it's gonna be taxed and, you know, it's, it's the people that are selling it. They, they are combating a problem we are already dealing with. People are already gonna be smoking here in Hamlin, and it's already illegal to smoke and drive, so, you know, like, having it here legally isn't gonna increase people smoking weed and driving, but that's gonna happen as much as it ever has, probably less, because, I don't know, we have a shop here and we're regulating it. Maybe, you know, we'll, if people don't learn their lesson, we'll have cops that patrol here and catch them like we do. We don't let people drive intoxicated. We never have, so I don't see how that's gonna happen more often.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody new wish to address the board?
All right. I have a couple of questions, like you already. Sure. Did he opt out, or was that from a business?
No. Us opting out has nothing to do with medical sales. That's a completely separate license.
You'd never see a medical dispensary in this town. There's a problem with medical.
That wasn't, the question was that.
Can the state override our decision?
Yes.
Override which decision?
Yes.
I don't know.
With a petition.
Well, no, that's not the state.
That's the people.
You can petition to bring it up for a public referendum. That's not the state, that's local. The state cannot override the local law. There is still some element of home rule here, so that's the key there.
What about a referendum? What about having a vote? Give it to the people.
So, you're signing a petition, I guess.
The way that the law is written, it has to be a petition, very specific, very specific form, circulated, percentages, et cetera. I mean, I wasn't gonna do all.
No, that's good. Just because I was, I thought I had you, and then you just put it through a vote. Put it through a vote, let the people of Hamlin decide.
But there is no petition or any need for it until it, unless we pass the law.
Right. Okay.
All right? That would allow the public to say, "Okay, we can challenge the law."
The first meeting, there was nobody here either. You guys didn't?
No, well, we've tried to publish it, but nobody came. So, you know, okay, it's.
Maybe you needed to hear people.
We did.
Now, I ask one question. In effect, opting out now would have zero effect until the state finally makes the law to allow the dispensaries to be there. Is that correct? I mean, you say, "Okay, we opt out." Well, we don't, would that shut him down? No, because.
It's not gonna make any.
Right. It's not gonna make a big difference.
It's not gonna make any difference at this point, other than we have it on books.
Right.
The fact of the matter is that whether you believe the regulations are written or not, there are a lot of regulations written about it. The regulations for this specific, these specific items, and there's other areas, have not been written yet. There's general guidelines within the law that are there that do exist, okay? They haven't published it, and nobody's issued any licenses. To my knowledge, they haven't even opened up the application process as of yet. So, and they're talking, the last webinar, or whatever you wanna call it, we had, it was gonna be a minimum of one year from the time of the publication of those regulations before the first license was going to be issued. And the state has already said that their emphasis is gonna be on neighborhoods that apply for licenses that were adversely affected by drug sales and drug crime. So, read that as you want, that's gonna be the city. Those are the places that are gonna be favored first, first, for licenses.
Fifty percent.
That's, that's what they're, that's the way they're going. So, you're looking, just, hang on. If we opt out now, and they pass all the regulations, you're looking already at a year minimum, minimum, because they haven't even published the regulations. They haven't started accepting any license applications. They haven't set the fee. We've heard rumors of how much it's gonna be, but we don't know what that is.
But if you guys opt in, can't you make laws?
No, we make laws for.
Well, in particular, I mean, you guys control who goes in what businesses. We all know that.
That's, that's the only way, if we allow it to proceed, or if we opt back in, say, the only way, the only thing we have control of after that point is the location. That's it, is control through zoning, where it can be located. We don't have any control over the licensing, any of that. We were told that the town would be able to issue an opinion upon the application of someone for a license about that particular applicate, applique, or I don't know where it is. Advocate, sorry. Beyond that, we have no, it's out of our hands. That's the way that it's, so regardless of what the decision is tonight, you're looking at a long time before anybody can quote legally sell this stuff.
Still means a lot to all of us.
I understand that.
I wonder if you opt out, and the state sees this, and they're passing out their licenses, and they got so many from Monroe County, well, Hamlin opted out, we're not gonna bother
"Well, Hamlin opted out. We're not going to bother with them." You, you might want to opt back in, but then you may not, or someone who would like to set up a dispensary, would they no longer have, they wouldn't be able to do it because they couldn't get a license.
Like, what are we waiting to see?
I don't want to, I don't want to speculate on what, especially, especially what Albany might do. I have no desire to try to speculate.
That's why I argued for opting in, because, you know, that way, you're...
Are you opting if you don't try?
Right, well, I, I, because, yeah, if you opt out, then the state's got that. Well, and yet, then for a year and a half, Hamlin is known as a place that, well, they're not going to be interested.
And all of this is all...
It's speculation, I know.
Speculation, great fodder for around the table, but it has nothing to do with...
Well, it is fodder for making a decision.
I'm going to, you had one question you ran your hand back a while back, so...
I was just curious, isn't it still federally illegal?
At this point, it is, yes.
And do, has anybody put a game plan or a thought process to what happens when you have regular stores becoming dispensary that are not licensed? Because that is an ongoing problem in other states. I just wondered if anybody had a game plan. Seems that the sheriff's department is split up into zones. Hamlin doesn't have their own police, and I'm not bashing the sheriffs. They're awesome. But with everything that goes on in Rochester, they're pretty spread out right now. So I wonder if there's like a game plan, if you were to opt in, what kind of safety or in case of a robbery or something of that nature, what would happen quickly? And would they be paying federal taxes, the dispensaries, considering that it's still federally illegal?
If you report your incomes, then...
I'm, I'm sure claimed income has to be an income tax. As far as what the feds are going to do, that's way above my pay grade. I have no idea. I mean, I know there's been some indications that they're looking at the same thing on a federal level. So, but beyond that, we, we can't. We're, at this point, I don't want to speculate on Albany. I don't want to speculate on the feds. I'm, I'm here to deal with what we have in front of us, and this is literally the only thing about this whole thing that we can control. The rest of it, the growing, the commercial, all that stuff, that's all been decided. We have nothing to do with that. That's, that is what it is at this point. So this, this is the only thing we have. All right. We have another meeting to run, and I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing. I'll favor, I...
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we need to take my...
See? Told you, it's in the press. I'll leave it there. I was here.